Yep. It's, you know, Asian is a mix of Arcadian.
Hey.
There we go. There we go. I just knew whether you get one.
But what happens? Do you pay an application fee?
He does. My personal account.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this one's sewer specific, so.
You started then. So.
Is this going to?
Davey, right there, we've got an iPad that might make it easier on you.
I've got an iPad, but.
Zooming?
No, there's no way. I can't read them. I've got a appointment with our ophthalmologist and I'm gonna have the cataracts fixed, but you gotta deal with me like this.
Yeah, I wanted to check on that solid waste advisory tool for you. And I said you were gonna end up going anyway, even if you were not appointed.
Looking on the city or I'm counting. I can't remember who pointed me to it. There's many rooms in town.
Good evening.
Good evening. I take it you can hear me?
Yep.
Good. At least one more distant meeting for me and then I might actually be home for a while. What a concept.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Well, you should invite any person rather than that sort of disembodied electronic image.
Yeah, yeah. Well, for a while we did everything that way, but some of us are ready, ready to be in rooms again together as you are.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's get started then. Ben, you wanna run through expectations?
Yes, we, we do
Yeah, yeah.
Run a pretty loose ship here and so if you want get the chairman's attention prior to speaking, generally you'll be allotted three minutes to speak and you may be cut off if it goes beyond that time. For those on the phone to mute yourself or unmute yourself, it's star six, star nine to raise the hands. And Anne is joining us back then.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm by, I'm here by telephone.
Welcome, Anne.
Thank you.
All right. We now have our public comment period for those items that aren't on our agenda. So, Mary?
Yes, thank you. Something you said, Chairman, and one point got me to thinking and I've been talking on what you said. And we were talking about people coming into our community and how, and I had been on the, on a role about how things, houses and design standards for housing, especially the, like the chinadeer, which looks totally out of character for our rural community. And and I got to thinking about it and I thought, you know, people come, come here and yes, they can build almost what they want. We do have some standards. But they also come into a community where the people that have come before them have invested in that community. They have invested time, effort and money. And so their efforts should be taken into account when we're talking about design standards. I know some people would like to see our community look more modern and like Portland, but some things, some design standards would be nice, at least in the downtown district, which we don't have a lot of design standards. So maybe that's something we can take up and also to make smaller houses. Maybe so they don't look hulking and like they're predominantly in the, in the environment. And frankly, if they don't have rural character, then I don't see how that stands with the comprehensive plan. The other thing is, I will come to you in the future about building some small homes for our maybe eighteen to thirty-five age groups in our community. People that we need to keep in our community in order to keep our community strong. And we've made some contacts in Clark County about building a small home community, up to twenty homes, but two acres is needed. And so we're working on trying to get all the, all the parts, moving parts working in the same direction. And some people know more about this than I do. But I, I think it's time to start thinking about what are we gonna do in our community to keep our young folks in the community? So they don't, yes, they should leave for a year or two to see what the wider world holds, maybe, maybe five years, ten years. But to have something for them where they can afford to live. Affordability is a big thing. And I think starting out maybe in a small home and working your way up might be the way to do it. Something safe and secure and in our community. And I'm not just talking about Stevenson. I think that a wider issue like Carson and the North Bonneville too, which might have more available for something. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Questions from you, thoughts? I noticed even more recently here over the last few weeks, a lot more use coverage or media coverage of community trusts. Basically land trusts, community land, land trusts, which are developing housing developments, smaller housing developments where they own that land and in those homes. People buy the homes, but the land is still held in common by that land trust as a way to generate more affordable housing. That's kind of an interesting approach and it might be something worth learning more about. I'm not sure. I wouldn't jump to the conclusion that would work here, but you know, it may. I think we should be open to this kind of ideas. Thanks, Mary. Anybody else?
So define small. You know, I.
Small homes, tiny, tiny homes are usually anywhere from a hundred and forty feet to four hundred square feet. Those are tiny homes. The small homes are small. They're, they're less than maybe eight hundred feet.
Wow, okay.
Square feet.
I have way too much junk.
We all do, Davey.
Well, dude, it's interesting to look at, at how housing sizes have increased over the decades. You know, I can, I date myself. Open a house with about fifteen hundred square feet, we thought it was a big house. Now thirteen hundred square feet is considered pretty small, so.
No, I've seen those, I've seen those television shows about, you know, people who build like the tiny houses and I've seen people who build them out of shipping containers, that kind of a thing, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not sure how I raised my hand electronically, but Jeff, anyway. Comment on this. I mean, Ben may want to talk about this a little bit. You know, the, the issue of, of design standards, you know, that's a, that's a tough one. It requires not only carefully written standards, but a higher level of administration and, and intervention than, than we might want, right? In Stevenson, it's a, it's a question mark for me. But this question of houses that are out of scale. Another way to deal with that, and, and some of this work's already been done, is, is to calibrate or recalibrate the setbacks and height limitations. In other words, what's the envelope in which a house can be built on a lot? And it's an issue that a lot of communities, including Portland, but lots of smaller communities too, have dealt with in terms of trying to maintain character without going all the way to the more discretionary world of design standards of more carefully regulating what's the size of that envelope. And in fact, home builders even sometimes refer to those kind of houses as envelope houses. Houses that are built to the maximum allowed dimensions within the setbacks and the height. And, you know, they generally look out of place. So anyway, some more food for thought on that topic and, and, you know, more potential work for us ahead.
And I think that's a, that's a good observation, Charlie, about design standards, you know, Mary refers to rural character. You know, I think if we sat around the table and tried to define what rural character was, we'd have a number of different perspectives on that. But it's trying to find, I think, that sort of balance point between standards that encourage a certain behavior or design and those that are more specific. I mean, certainly if, if you're a developer, you want something that is pretty tangible, something you know what that expectation is rather than having to deal with a design standard and then having to have the local expertise and staff in order to administer a design standard. So how do you find that sort of sweet point? Where you can integrate some design standards along with, as Charlie is saying there, the setbacks and the height requirements that are, that are more quantifiable.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, you can do some of it with, with what planners call clear and objective standards versus those more discretionary, we could argue about what character means, kind of standards.
And we could also argue, you know, there's, you know, been some bending about, about mixed use stuff about putting, you know, particularly right here with the realignment, you know, putting in, you know, business on the bottom condos on top. You know, we could talk about, you know, compact condos, housing type things. I don't know. I'm probably not addressing the issue that you're trying to address.
Yeah, I mean, I think, so I was gonna say, I, I think one of the things we always have to think about is, is, you know, what's the administrative capacity? I don't mean, you know, are, are, are people, Ben, you especially, smart enough? Yes, you are. But how many of you are there? You know, and, and, you know, the administrative capacity, how many people does it take to actually enforce, you know, a higher level of regulation? And, and that comes with a cost, of course. It gets passed on to applicants and at some point they start to complain.
And I keep thinking when we go back, character of our, of our community as well as meeting the housing needs of the folks in the community. It seems to me that we really need to broaden the conversation. We really need almost a, a housing conference here within the city that brings together the builders, the realtors, the bankers along with this, you know, with the city because none of us can, none of us has the authority, the ability to shape that, that development.
Well, you all might wanna hear from that big gorge group, gorge housing group that's been formed. And there's about what, forty entities, thirty or forty entities involved in this. And I'd like to send you the planning, I want to, from that group. I'm on the homeless housing council and we, we got an overview from them. So it might be something that you all can have a zoom thing on your next meeting and get an overview on what, what they're trying to do. They've done something in the Dells already. And Karen Long reported on that from the Mid Columbia Housing Authority. So, you know, there are folks trying to do things, but there's a lot of wagons hitting, going in the same direction. And I'm, I'm not sure that maybe having one wagon might be the better thing, but it might be a good break to give you some more information on the situation.
Give us some ideas, perhaps, yes. Thanks, Mary. Any other thoughts?
I've got a few random thoughts. Then correct me, but did we have design standards as suggestions? Can we talk about that like four years ago? That was specifically for the downtown area, right? And that still is suggested.
I think comprehensive plan does exactly that. Consider design standards for the downtown area and design guidelines for other areas of town. Difference between standard and guideline is one is suggestive and one is required. Standards being required.
So we, we did noodle on that for a little bit at that time. Some of these other housing issues are kind of cyclic issues that come back around every now and then, the whole use from downtown, we addressed that a few times. Setbacks, zoning changes, all of those things are kind of recurring things and not new aha situations that are complicated, which is why nothing happens. That's, that's my. One other conversation I had recently with a respective developer that never came, the development never came to pass. Question they asked in the course of investigating the property was, now if I purchase this downtown property and build the mixed use, is there anything to prevent somebody from building just a gas station on the other side of the road? No, there's not anything that prevents that. And so I am certainly not looking forward to additional burden on applicants in the course of a design review process or a design committee and filling that out and staffing that. But there are things to be considered there for how the ambition we show in our standards or our willingness to restrict impacts other people's willingness to invest despite those restrictions. Yeah, we got in my previous position, we had a similar situation and we had a restriction on a lot of square footage that would allow for, you know, a convenience store slash gas station, a seven eleven type thing. You know. Our regulation was that it had to be two complete lots to be able to do that. So anything less, they wouldn't be able to do that. So that's one thing. Their scriptive size for that type of thing and that would maybe address some of those concerns about what's gonna happen across the street down the road. Nobody wants to spend that substantial amount of money building something and then looking at a seven eleven across the road.
Other thoughts?
Other hand.
We have another hand. Oh, it's Mike. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. Yes, Mike Beck here, former City of Stevenson Planning Commissioner, Vice President of the Planning Association of Washington's Board of Directors and AICP Certified Planner. Thank you for having my comments here tonight. I just wanted to add a couple of comments to the conversation spurred on by some of what Mary Rapar's initial comments had been about the affordable housing or concerns about housing and design standards. Jeff, you brought up the possibility of having a community trust, a land trust, that that is a great idea and they're not that difficult to set up. I believe Washington State does enable those and you could simply put it before the voters to pass a millage similar to what was passed for the swimming, a swimming pool operation and take that money and pool that and that would be the community land trust monies that could then be used to purchase properties for more social housing. In talking about tiny houses, I would recommend a, just a conversation around workforce housing because that's a much more easily defined term. That's housing that's within a given percentage of the annual median income. Workforce housing, a hundred and thirty percent of the AMI is a good figure. If you want to look at tiny homes for starter homes, you could say homes that could be affordable for sixty-five percent of the AMI or ninety percent of the AMI or a hundred percent of the AMI. And then the city could through simple zoning enhancements to the existing zoning code, have density bonuses added to say, well, if you choose to do this, homes at this level of affordability, which would guarantee they would be tinier. You know, a home that could be purchased at ninety percent of the AMI in Skamane County will be by demand, by necessity, a tiny home. Then you would not allow that, their developer then to have more homes than would be permitted on a lot by right, without having to go through the conditional use process, or it could still be a conditional use, but link AMI or workforce housing to those types of density bonuses that might encourage developers to build more housing that we need here in the community. And then one last thing about the concerns about design standards and how zoning is difficult. I would just encourage you all that it's not difficult. Our comprehensive plan in the City of Stevenson talks to this, design standards. We talked about it downtown. Downtown has a certain feel and character. Many communities do. The county, the city already has some design standards in a way by how they limit certain types of buildings or construction. I forget the, the current status on the shipping containers, but that's a design standard in itself. To say, we don't want shipping containers in our downtown. That's a design standard. As one of the other planning commissioners brought up, we did talk about design standards downtown and extensively several years ago. I would recommend just implement some. If it doesn't work, you change them in a year or two. You know, awnings downtown, build to the street line, build to the sidewalk line, no setbacks, parking lots in back, awnings over the sidewalk. Set it up. Allow people to have density or build out bonuses if they build to those design recommendations. And then if they work, make them standards downtown. But they could be guidelines with bonuses. Say, oh, if you do this, we'll let you do that. I think Ben and I discussed that at some time, perhaps in the past, and we might have discussed it at a meeting, with enhancements, inducements to encourage the design we'd like to see downtown without making it a requirement. And it is also easy to add these to a zoning code and then your building inspector will simply enforce them when they get a building permit. It's like, oh, does it meet what the City of Stevenson says? Yes or no? Not an administrative cost that would be burdensome to the City of Stevenson. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it.
Good to hear from you, Mike.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Well, thanks, Mary, for passing the puck out on the ice, so to speak. We could bat it around, so. Have a good conversation.
All we gotta do now is get the sand bone.
But I think there is, you know, clearly something that, some of this fits into our work plan too, Ben, in terms of what we've set out for the plan. This is good stuff to follow up on. With that, why don't we move the agenda? Seven twenty or six twenty-five and go to approval of our minutes for February thirteenth. Hope you all have a chance to look those over. Comments, corrections, revisions, additions?
They're very nice. Nicely done.
Yep, I'd move approval.
We've got a move. A motion, a motion from Charlie to approve in a second. By any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, both saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for our conditional use permit. Before we kick this off. Ben, you wanna run us through the appearance of fairness to scroll through?
Yes. Absolutely. So we have an application here from the City of Stevenson Public Works Department for a conditional use permit on Cascade Avenue. Before you all act on conditional use permits or anytime when you're acting as a judge, anytime where you're, you're in a quasi judicial role for the city, you need to be fair and impartial in your decision-making, A, and you also need to demonstrate your fairness to the public. So as a body, the city appears to be fair in how things are going. So we ask you generally three questions on this, whether you've had any ex parte communications. That means any communications that are outside of these chambers or from, from one side or the other on a proposal. We ask you if you have any financial interest in the outcome of the decision or if there's anything else in general about the applicant, the location or the proposal that impacts your ability to fairly and partially make a decision on this. So with those three questions stated, I'll just throw that out to you all as a board and let you disclose any of your.
Mr. Chair?
Charlie.
Uh, this is one more time for this disclosure on my part. My stepdaughter is the Public Works Director for the City of Stevenson and whenever the city itself is applying for a permit, I want to disclose that. I don't believe that this prohibits me from applying the criteria and good judgment on behalf of the community, but it is a potential conflict of interest and I wanted to disclose that.
Thank you. August, I have no ex parte communications. I have no financial interest. And anything generally that impacts your, generally impacts my ability to make a fair decision on this.
Anne?
Hello. I have no ex parte discussions, no financial interest and nothing that would cause me to be impartial.
Baby?
No ex parte communications. Still waiting on a winning lottery ticket, but yeah, I'm playing.
And I've had no ex parte comments or contacts and no financial interest in don't know of anything else that would prevent me from being impartial. So with that.
What? Follow-up question, Charlie. Have you had any ex parte communications with?
I know. No, I should have mentioned that. Thank you. No, I have had no ex parte communications about this conditional use application.
I think we have four that have not made a disclosure, one that has. And so then the question goes out to the applicant specifically, whether you feel like the board can be fair and impartial and then also anyone else can challenge Planning Commissioner Hill's ability to be fair and impartial in this decision.
I don't think. Sorry, it's all very formal for me. I don't believe that the board should have any issue being impartial in what was the other, fair, fair and impartial.
And I don't think the public sees any issue with this. I'm sure that the planning commission will do the right thing, no matter what.
Thank you, Mary.
Seeing no hands from online, so with no challenges, I think we've got a full set of five board members to ones.
So Ben, you wanna go through and lead up our discussion?
I will briefly do so referencing the written staff report mostly. I do have a recommendation of approval for this. This is for the complete rehab of a wastewater pump station, Cascade Avenue. The location of this one is when you go down from Russell Street and you take a right. It's about five hundred feet in that direction. There's an existing pump station that's there. That existing pump station predates the zoning code requirements for a conditional use. And so with the rehab of that, we're going through the process. If you were to approve it, then the next time a rehab might be in place, it would no longer be a pre. It would no longer be a pre zoning code facility and it would benefit from having a conditional use permit on file. In the staff report, they look like they always do identify the relevant city policies there, what we consider this. That's a utility or communication facility. It's proposed in downtown C one, commercial district. And. Those are conditional uses in that district. There's information on the neighborhood that it's in. And I have a placeholder here for the climate change discussion. You all had asked for that as part of one of. Believe it was the work planning meeting to put that in, so I didn't do any analysis. We can learn and grow and I can do analysis for projects as they come up, but I wanted to include that placeholder for discussion for you here. There are associated permits that need to be obtained for this, building permits for a smaller tanyewall between this and a wetland. A critical areas permit for impacting the buffer of that wetlands. Those permits are in process. And if you were to approve this, the planning department approvals would be put on all those and move forward quickly. The decisions or the specific findings that you all need to make on this are four of them. You're reviewing it to see if this project in this location. Will endanger the public health or safety, whether it will substantially reduce the value of adjoining or abutting property. Whether it will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in conformity with the comprehensive plan, transportation plan. Or other plan officially adopted by the city council. This wastewater pump station is part of the general sewer plan for the city. That general sewer plan had identified it as a two phase project. This would be for both phases of that. So I have, sir.
Okay, questions for Ben? Ben, is the is the wetland area what to the south then of that existing pump station?
Category four wetlands, wetlands are rated on a scale of one to four, one being the highest value wetlands. And four being the lowest value wetlands. This is that that low value.
You can't get much more south from Cascade than where you're in the river.
Yeah, there's. The ordinary high watermark for the river is just over two hundred feet from here, so there's no shoreline approval that's necessary for this. This wetland is bounded by the port of Skamania's office building, Port Skamania. Building there and a single family home on the other side of it.
Other questions? Mary?
Is the public going to comment?
Well, we're not to the public comment. It's just questions, I think, Ben, if you have a clarifying question you'd like to ask. Yeah, we'll we'll come back to coming from the public. Once we are through with. The applicant's briefing. About you.
So I I'm briefing, I guess. Didn't know I was briefing, so. We, I mean, I'm sure everyone recalls, we have administrative order. We had one that basically the college said Stevenson needed to clean up your act. So this project is part of that cleaning up of the act effort that the city Stevenson is doing, Public Works Department is doing. We have three pump stations that we are replacing as part of that project. Kanaka, Cascade and Fairgrounds, all three pump stations. The reason for the location is everything flows downhill, so we have to have our pump stations at the lowest point in the city. To be able to support the effort then of moving everything back up to the wastewater treatment plant. So speaking to the location. This one's the smallest of of our pump stations. It only turns on a couple of times a week even, the only services said then connections, I believe. So. A pretty small unit in our collection system. Trying to think what else you guys would care about.
Is there something wrong with this particular pump station or is it just not performing or we why are why do we need new plants?
Yeah, so a couple of things, the other, so the other two Fair Grounds and Kanaka are both being increased in size. So our pumps are being upsized. Cascade, besides being unsightly, I mean, I'm sure we can see the picture. It's got a kind of a plug and play unit, so like the big white box currently houses these vacuum pumps. That then transfer their energy to the pump that's like actually within the well. So it's a really, it's an outdated system. It's not particularly reliable. So that is, that is the greater concern here, not so much increasing capacity. But we're modernizing the technology so we can ensure that we're able to get calls out if and when there is an issue. Another one of the kind of key improvements in this area would be safety. So for our staff, I know it's it may be difficult to see, but Ben mentioned that we're adding our tanyewall. That's because this pump station, you can see in the photo there, it's on a pretty steep slope that goes down to the wetlands. So creating a pad with which our staff is able to do maintenance and service the service of the pump station. Be fed, it will be fenced as well as being, you know, having some flatter area for them to for them to work. It'll be a lot prettier because that big white box will be gone. It'll be flush with the ground.
No problems with the railroad, right?
No, it's outside of the railroad, so.
So the whole thing will be basically underground, is that what you're saying?
There will be bollards and then there's also, you can see that big blue box, so that's like the electrical control box. So we'll be moving that out of the. Out of the access, the ports access to that, that there's not a building there anymore, but I think that their, you know, their hope is to. Put a structure there someday, so we'll move that out of the site distance kind of triangle that, you know, folks pulling out of the future building would need to have. It'll be on the opposite side of that, you know, the green, green and white boxes. So it'll increase, you know, the aesthetics of the area. As well as fix site distance concerns and safety concerns for the staff. As well as modernizing, so it's a great project.
Other questions?
What do you got, Maureen?
Yeah, go ahead. No, I mean, I think it's a, it sounds like a fine idea. Anything that, you know, can make the place live a little bit better and, you know, increase the efficiency, I'm all for it.
Charlie, you have any thoughts on this one?
You're on mute, Mr. Hills.
Sorry, had to unmute myself. I just want to expand on something the Public Works Director said there, which is that from an aesthetic standpoint, which is kind of that third criterion. You know, this is a net improvement. And and that, you know, in terms of the conditional use requirements, you know, we we they don't even have to meet that requirement, just has to be not worse. But this is actually going to be better, so I think that that helps make it clear that it does pass muster.
I would certainly agree with that. Any other thoughts? And you got your hand up?
Yes, Jeff, I was just going to say exactly what Charlie said. He said it more eloquently than I did, but yeah, it it looks like a plus plus all the way around.
Let's open the public hearing at this point in time and.
Thank you, Mary Rapar Stevenson. I guess the only thing or a couple of things, as long as the critical area is not impacted. You know, one to four, it doesn't matter, it's a wetland. And we need all our wetlands to, because there are nice little sponges that take toxins out of our community and clean everything. And that wet particular wetland actually is, I believe, all year round. I've seen it at different stages of the year and it's always, there's some water in it. So I would just ask that it not be impacted in any way. And one other thing, just for future reference for other program projects. I've been following some of the bills in our state legislature, specifically eleven eighty-one. Trying to try remember its title. But one of the things in the bill was that counting carbon. You know, like every project should have something in it that says, this is going to use so much carbon. We're going to use so much gas, we're going to use so much of this, so much of that. So that our city in for your climate change placeholder, which you have here. That we start having those kinds of numbers in the project. You know, this is what it's going to cost and this is where we're going to do better. And that kind of stuff. And this might be a little project to start that. You know, I'm not quite sure where you get a carbon counter, but we can, we can probably find out. Because I just read a project the other day and they had counts on everything that they did. How much cement they used, how many hours were worked, how many truckloads were done. It was really quite amazing, so that would be mine, but thank you.
Do we have anybody else, Mike? Share any comments with us? Let's close the public hearing and go to our commission deliberations. Seem to be pretty straightforward at this point. Do I draw around the table once again? Davy, what are your thoughts?
On the proposal? As previously mentioned, I think it's a necessity. Following up on Mary's thing is that, you know, I mean, has the grant been written for this?
It's not from by grant, it would be long, it is going to be by grant. Oh, I thought we had some loan too. We have the money for it already, long and short.
We could, you know, insert some language in there that, you know, for use of carbon neutral kind of stuff. I don't know. That might be just a minor thing. I was trying to address what Mary was talking about. But. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. It's not going to interfere with, I think it's right next to, is it Doug's or Bob's Beach?
Bob's.
Bob's, yeah, so it's not going to affect, you know, the windsurfing community.
No, it's not in the well and either. It's in the wetland upper, so not sure if that.
I've been fishing down there. I just, I didn't know it was a wetland.
No, I don't, I don't have anything. Make a motion if anybody else doesn't have a comment.
Charlie, any comments, any additional comments?
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm ready to take action on this if everyone else is.
All right. And how about you? Are you ready as well?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, Ben has provided. Basically, findings affect conditions of approval and conclusions of law for us to adopt. Has folks had a chance to look at them?
Yes. They look good.
Comfortable, any additions you want to make there? I think Mary makes a point. I, I sort of look at this in terms of not looking at the carbon aspect, but looking at its its climate. Impact and say, it's pretty climate change neutral. I wouldn't say it was, you know. It was making things any worse, but I'm not so sure it's making things any better either. So from a climate change perspective, I looked at it as being just pretty neutral. From an infrastructure liability issue, I think it's, it's pretty significant. So with that, is there someone that would like to make a motion to adopt? The conditional use permit. Findings, conditions and conclusions of law.
I will make that motion.
A motion from from Davy and a second from August. Is there any further conversation? None? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. But I think as we look ahead to Ben, you know, we're thinking about how to deal with climate change. You know, certainly, I think depends on. On sort of the scale of the project as well, but I think Mary has some interesting points. If you had a major development out there, I think we have one. What is, what's those impact?
Just a small project is an easy way to start, so that you try to learn the curve.
Let me curve everything needs to go in.
Certainly having a plan, so. Looking at the four findings that need to be made. Number one, number four, the most likely to lead to a condition to climate change. So number one would be will not endanger the public health and safety. So we need findings of fact based on A projects.
Right.
Public health and safety detriment, or we would have a climate action plan that's officially adopted by the council that we could review. A project too, and that would be much more objective and defensive on your decision making process if we have.
I think too, we also want it to be clear and it sets clear expectations. Mary raises some points. Mary, did you have an example? You said you saw an example.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of where I did it because I was doing some research. I have way too many. And and they were going through what what the carbon cost was of the project, each by piece. And if I find it, I'll send it to Carolyn. I just can't remember where it was. I was doing some research for my legislative committee. That if I find it, I will send it to you, but it was a breakdown of what every piece of the project, the cost in carbon. Because you know, they're doing the carbon credits thing. And it will come to pass, I mean, eventually, so everything will have a cost. And that, if I find it, I will send it to you.
So just a, my graduate thesis had to do with this. It had to do with. Encouraging, you know, people to. Use carbon neutral materials. You know, sustainability issues in the carbon supply chain. And so a lot of it had to do with just the language that you use when you say, hey, look, we need to build blah de blah. But we want you to, I think Mary made an example of like you could use, you know, carbon neutral concrete or something. You know, we could, we could say things like that. Just a thought.
Several certification agencies out there, LEED is probably the best known. So L E E D, leadership in energy efficient design. So you could require projects of a certain scale and identify that as part of our action plan. To have a LEED certification associated with it. Objective, the objective review is performed by an outside agency. The applicant just demonstrates it to you all or to the administrative officials in the course of construction. Yeah, most people don't have that rubric in their back pocket to rip out. So it's a it's a formula and there's people that specialize in that. Like I said, basically send it to them and then they certify it with all that data back. So it's not something that the city would have to develop a carbon counter person to make that happen.
Yeah, I worked with a place down in Eugene that specifically did that kind of thing. I don't think that's relevant to us, but something we can look into.
It would, it would be basically just a part of some contract, contracted aspect of a larger.
The name of the company was Good Company. So.
Other thoughts?
Increased regulation. Fast feed money.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. Go forth and
Go forth and
Do good stuff.
Use my carbon, use your carbon wisely. I'll just make everyone hold their breath, like, so if you're coming.
There we go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We have two short class to look at. Ian, when you just want to give us just the highlights of those?
Well, I actually, sir, I would request that you reorganize the agenda a little bit to jump straight to the public shoreline public access plan. Consultant is in the room for us now virtually. Would be able to go ahead of that. That is where the end of the packets started on page thirty-four. We are working hard on this shoreline public act, integrated public access and trails plan. It's been a very fun project to work on with our consultants at the watershed company. Alex Caprins are, as far as the preparation of the plan, what we've already done and maybe a little window into how that plan might look. So welcome, Alex.
Yes. Thank you very much, Ben. Yeah, thanks for having me tonight. Missioners. Yeah, so again, Alex Capron with the DCG watershed. So I am going to share my screen. This is gonna be kind of a, I don't have a formal presentation per se. I'm just gonna bring folks up to speed with the public process that we've had to date for this effort.
Alex, your mic isn't registering you very well.
Oh, shoot. Okay. I will, I will speak up. Hopefully, hopefully folks can hear me nice and clear. Ben, are you able to allow me to share screen?
We'll certainly try.
Now that I can definitely go off the cuff and give a project summary.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah, that's all right. No sweat. Yeah. Well, so, yeah, as Ben mentioned, we are actively working on the integrated shoreline, public access and trails plan. So this is stemmed at the state level. So the city's shoreline master program points to a need for integrated public access and trails planning. Really, you look at public access as one of the three principles from the shoreline management. So the other two being environmental resource protection as well as water dependent use. And so within, within city limits and in the urban growth area, we've got Columbia River, Rock Creek and Rock Cove. So those are shorelines of the state. And really
Alex, I was able to find the setting. So you should be able to, to go now.
Right.
The state identifies those shorelines based on the amount of water flowing through them or the size of lakes. And those, those three are the ones meeting those criteria for us. So Rock Creek, Rock Cove, Columbia River.
Yes. So we have, and I, and this is this kind of, this is a whiteboard. Throwing together some images from our, our most recent February twenty twenty-three open house with the public. So the, the public component of this project is really large in, in terms of getting a public buy-in for the effort as well as input on where the city should focus public access and more importantly, as, as a city uses this plan to further, further the goals of continuous public access within shoreline jurisdiction. Really to focus on future grant dollars applying for grants, namely with the recreation and conservation office at the state. So the intent of this plan is to meet all the, all the high level grant deliverables for the city. So when it comes time to physically apply for the grant short of a CIPA checklist that's needed for application of those projects. A lot of the elements will be provided within the plan itself. So, yeah, with, with that, I'm gonna give kind of a high level on, I guess, we've got some snapshots here with the open house that was well attended. We had over twenty attendees. Believe this is February twentieth or twenty-second. It was a Wednesday near the end of February. And we had over a hundred and thirty comments received, a lot of which on posted notes. And really, we developed a series of maps and I got a few of them. But the maps basically categorize geospatial information in a set of, of different themes. So we've got your, your physical map, which contains physical constraints around shoreline jurisdiction. So if you you look in here, the, the pink line denotes shoreline jurisdiction. So this is essentially where the project area focus is of the shoreline public access plan. And we also include physical, physical, physical constraints, including landslide hazard areas, steep slopes, wetlands, FEMA floodplain, floodway areas. So this was just one element we included in our analysis. And then looking at the we have also the the network analysis that also includes ownership as well. So that's a very key component to any public access plan because well, the goal of the SMP is continuous public access. It also needs to respect private property rights in that. And so you've got different, different buckets of ownership. So you have your city ownership here in the purple. Pink being county owned properties. We've got the kind of the orange tan being quasi-public ownership. And in the museum property. And so there, there are basically different layers of information that we can then use as part of our analysis post this open house. So when we look at the project overall, I'm gonna go ahead and zoom. Zoom to kind of a, let's see, so we've got, we've got these three arrows, right? We have kind of our existing documentation. Different land use planning documents that the city has adopted over the years. We have the, obviously the comprehensive plan, the Stevenson Wayfinding Plan, the shoreline master program restoration plan adopted in twenty eighteen. And so we're looking at, as well as future land use. And we're looking at these plans and seeing how they can relate and help support our efforts for public access. And types of projects that not only are within shoreline jurisdiction, but also draw residents to shoreline jurisdiction. And so keep it in mind that, and then as we had discussions with the public during the open house, we looked at really if we can distill. Yeah, like I mentioned, over a hundred and thirty public comments into, into concepts, right? So as we, as we kind of pulled out comments through each of the shoreline jurisdictional areas, Rock Creek, the waterfront, along the Columbia River, as well as Rock Cove. We started to see some themes crop up based upon these comments. So Rock Cove, obviously, as you all know, already has the Mill Pond Trail. That is a great, great asset for the city and the overall region. So the idea of continuing those connections and strengthening those connections to, to surrounding neighborhoods as well as providing shoreline enhancement along, along that trail as well. And, yeah, Rock Creek. So that is a little known shoreline of the state in, in a sense that it actually contains three falls. So a lot of very, very nice visual access and a heavy desire for a more formalized public access along that shoreline of the state. But also in recognition of private property owners and also attendees of this open house. Also, information on educating the public where formal access to Rock Creek may be found. So this is a, a key element that was brought forth in discussions at the open house. So that's, that's in record, recognition there. With the waterfront, again, you had a similar theme to Rock Cove. Having formalized connections on the east and west end on either side of downtown to connect to the waterfront. Basically to bring people safely toward, toward the waterfront. And improving those connections through existing public lands where possible. And, yeah, a common theme found throughout is reoccurring comment of preserving the rural character of the shoreline. And again, the, the education. And so with these, you know, we're, we're at a point now. So in, in the project, we're, we're actually in a really cool timeline. And I'll, I'll actually zoom over to the timeline itself. So we are going back in front of the public as part of, I'll, I'll actually speak to the survey here in a minute. We are going in front of the public as part of a charrette. So this is gonna be a very visually based, very discussion and interactive based way to present nine different projects. And we'll have categories and listings and more descriptions of those projects in the charrette. That shred is gonna be April nineteenth. So this, it's, it's coming right up this next Wednesday, Wednesday night. We'll be having that charrette and highly encourage you to attend if you are able to make it. Yeah, it'll be basically a series of, of four stations. There was, you know, a lot of development, like I said, on the GIS front, creating a bit of a overlay analysis to help highlight spots, but also really relying on the public input that we received. And guiding the types of projects that we are going to bring in front of the public as part of the sharing process. And some activities that we are evaluating here, yeah, with, with the city. We're looking at interactive exercise where members of the public come in and they are allowed ten dollars. So basically ten one dollar bills, like the monopoly exercise. And they are allowed to basically allocate funds that they see fit to these nine projects. Some projects you'll see on the nineteenth, they're gonna be, they're gonna have more constraints than others. So there is you know, part of that as well. But given how well the attendance of the first meeting was, we, we anticipate at least a similar attendance for this next meeting. Yeah, I do want to mention with the survey, we, we had a few folks fill out the survey that was available. The public open house and there was another push of that survey out as part of this process. And, yeah, we got a lot, a lot of good feedback. So I do, let's see, I can, I can create that. Yeah, these are some of the, kind of the fill-in, like, is there anything else you would like to add to this project? And we, we found a lot of walking and nature and scenic views. In terms of desirability, as well as adding more trails and accessible routes to the shoreline, connecting the residents. And then, yeah, more commentary on timelines and grant information. Yeah, the ability to submit future, future comments and projects that haven't come as part of this process. So, yeah, with, with the charrette, there's a few projects that we will bring in, in front of the public that are gonna look at a few different alternatives. There are some that are pretty straightforward and others where we'll give the public a chance to provide feedback and a chance to capture that as part of the process. But there's also another idea as part of a charrette, that you're, you're given dots. So basically dots to show kind of a, a point cloud of favor, favorability for certain projects. So, yeah, there's the the dollar exercise, the dot exercise. We may include both of those, but I do also want to, want to include this, or take this chance to allow the planning commission to speak just because this is a very heavily focused project on the public engagement front. I, I do want to see, I guess, from planning commission's experience if there are any lessons learned that you can bring as part of tonight's meeting and kind of catch up to the process to date as well as, yeah, any, any struggles that planning commission has, has observed in the past, getting the public involved. We have seen initially good feedback from the public. But we, we did notice that in, in like with any evening meeting, it's tough to get the full spectrum to get families coming with, with children. That, that's a, it's a difficult difficult time. So if there are other options there, that planning commission has seen, if, if that's something. Yeah, we could talk about. That's, that's kind of an open and loaded question. So if
I'll help prime that a little bit too. We've been in the, the public involvement plan that was presented to you at the end of last year, the suggestion was to really focus hard on getting the voices of those that we don't always hear voices of in, in, in our meetings or generally participating in the public process. So we've been trying to do that through the course of this. We had flyers directly to the doors of affordable housing complexes that are closest to those shoreline areas. And it still was kind of unsuccessful. We didn't get any residents that came directly because of that. Participation in the survey, Alex, you told me several times, but I forget the, the specifics of it, but other respondents indicated that they had kids, I believe, is what it was, or
Right, or they were grown adults.
Yeah, grown adults.
It was a, it was a focus segment of, of demographic that answered the It was a, it was a focus segment of, of demographic that answered the survey. It was well.
And so going into this next one, we're gonna make special efforts to reach out to the. School aged parents to inform them of this meeting and, and surveys to. Try to capture more than just have the time to come.
Well, I would put a sign down at Rock Cove. Because I see children and their parents fishing. Because we have the gardens there. And then there's, there's kids that come with their dads or moms and they. They go fishing or I guess bass or whatever they're fishing for. And then the older people tend to, more mature people. Tend to go up to Rock Creek because it's a little bit more. Running, it runs harder. And that, and they fish off the rocks there by the old medical center. And that, but I, I would put up a big sign there at. Rock Creek or Rock Hole. And say, hey, this is what it is. There's a meeting. Do you have any input?
You know, I think, you know, I'm, I'm not surprised at the initial meeting. It was pretty conceptual. And oftentimes, you know, you're, you're going to get some response, folks that have a strong feeling about the waterfront or whatever the topic that. I would hope that you'd get a better turnout at this session simply because hopefully you're, you're coming back with some more specific proposals. Something that folks can react to, you know, do you like that? Would you use that? You know, is that something you would like to see? Or something more tangible? Than just inviting them to, you know, come to a workshop and, and share their general thoughts.
Are you going to have it down at Rock Creek?
The goal this time.
Yeah, because the library is nice, but it's a smaller room. And if you're going to put up pretty pictures and you want people to walk around, the, the auditorium is probably better.
Yeah, I went to that first workshop. I was pretty impressed by everybody that was there and the level of conversation. But it wasn't a big group, but. It was folks who were engaged. I, I was, I was impressed with that.
Well, they seem to be more like the old property owners. At that meeting. And they were very engaged.
So, yeah, some were.
I do have a question. On the bottom of page thirty four. The last paragraph, it says. Blah, blah, blah. While keeping a clear delineation between public versus private only access to shorelines. Of the state. Now, I think I know what you mean, but. All the waters of the state have public access. Is that not correct?
That is correct. So anything waterward of the ordinary high watermark is, yeah, per the public doctrine, a. A public asset and completely publicly accessible. So. So really it is for spots along some of the shorelines of the state. It's ingress egress to those publicly accessible shorelines. And that, that is definitely a point that we will. Hit home in the charrette. In terms of getting that more informal access. To one hundred percent public property.
So if you, if you have a public access and you come, you have, or ingress egress, you come to the public water. And then is there like a right of way that you can walk up and down the bank?
In, in the summertime, yes. In the wintertime, not as much.
Well, that might be something to clarify because when, when you said private or this document said private only access. My antenna went up.
Yes.
Because I'm not a proponent for that. All waters of the state should be accessible to the public.
Yeah, agreed. And, and that is, that, the idea with this plan too. And, and how it aligns with the state. So that's the Washington Advisory Code is that by establishing. These public access projects in front of developments. You're then able to point to developer and have a very clear expectation of, of standards in terms of incorporating that public access to a project. It's really when you get to. Single family residences where they're not going to redevelop and there's no, there's no trigger for public access for that property. And that particular property is, is really the only way to a particular part. Of that shoreline of the state. That's where it. Really becomes tricky to. Yeah, they have to volunteer a, and ease them to the best to be within their. Their privy and right to do so if they, if they desire.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. And Alex, I have just a few bravos and, and a quibble. So the, the bravos are, first of all, I, I think you and the staff are making a, a good and genuine effort to get people engaged in this. And, and you're making, you know, you're making good headway with that. It's, it's always hard to get, particularly in the post COVID era. You know, it's harder, but I think, I think you're making good headway with that. And the, my, my second Bravo is sort of related to that. You know, the city has made, you know, noticeable progress in, in shoreline access along the river and around Rock Cove. And, and when things are going well and, and the city is making progress, you know, people are as less inclined to go to a meeting because there's nothing to complain about. It's, they, they go by and they say, that's good. I'm being a little flippant, but it's real, you know, and you, you know that it's a controversy draws crowds more than progress does. So, you know, Bravo about the progress. A, a particular note in your presentation that I'm, I'm excited about, which is, yeah, we're making great progress in Rock Cove and along the river. But there's much less obvious access to Rock Creek and yet great opportunities there. For, for access, for, you know, recreation. So I think I'm glad you flagged that and that, that you've heard that from the community that. This is a really an opportunity area for Stevenson and I find it exciting. I think it's, it's an area where, you know, years from now. People will have more access to Rock Creek and they'll say, wow, I didn't know this was all down here. And that's good. My quibble is not with you, but with. Something that you've reported hearing, which is people saying that they want to preserve the rural character of the shoreline. In Stevenson, I would disagree with that. Stevenson is neither a farm nor a forest. It's a river town. And the access that people enjoy is good access for a river town. So I don't know what rural character means when it comes to an urban waterfront. But this is a small city urban waterfront. It's a good one. And I think the work that you're doing is going to make it better.
Thank you, Charlie. And has her hand up too. Anne, your hand is up.
My hand is up. I, I like the idea of. I forgot what the word was, but basically giving people interactive ways to make. Ownership of their decisions that they're making as they're going along and deciding what they think is best. For each of these. I really like that idea because I think that just. Makes a lot more interactive for the participants. My question is, what time is this meeting at the library on the nineteenth?
What was the question?
We thought five worked out really well. We had a good early rush at five and then we had a late rush at six thirty or so the last time around and we thought that that worked out.
But you're going to try to do it down at Rock Creek soon?
We're going to try. So five, is that, is that the official?
Yes. May I?
Yes, you may.
Most of you know that I have been involved with this. My whole thought. Behind the shoreline trail. Situation has been, you know, I'm not as concerned about Rock Cove. As I am, you know, with the shoreline and Rock Creek. My thought was, is, you know, to have. I know I thought it was low hanging fruit. Scott, the mayor, had said, you know, let's look for low hanging fruit. So I went down there and I checked it out and it looked like. We could build a trail along where the rock slide was. I went back. And I checked out the lower end near where the old medical center was. That's going to be problematic. The expense would be increased by that. So it's no longer low hanging fruit. I think it's still something we could do because, as you know, I have been trying to. Address both. Access to the, the falls. Because apparently the whole world knows about the falls. And they, and the access over people's property up on Angel Heights. So I thought, you know, well, if we did a. A trail, not only would it bring, you know, people into the city and they could go see the falls and yada, 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 yada. I checked with the county and there's an old, there's an old house at the end of, I think it's Vancouver. It's, it's abandoned. And in fact, I think the homeless people kicked out the windows and they're staying in there. But that would be excellent parking. So that part has, you know, could be accessed pretty easily. The other things are, you know, that, and I've, I've contacted Washington Trails Association. I worked, I did a season as a trail crew leader for them. And they're interested in helping us out if we want to do something along that. That, those, that means. I have personally designed and built, you know, portions of the Appalachian Trail. So Alex, if you don't have my number, get it from Ben. I'm definitely a resource you can use. I think. That we could make this happen. You know. There are some things to surmount that. They might be ma- major or minor. I'm not really sure, but. We have some dates coming up and we have the shirt on the nineteenth, I believe it is. I think we have a meeting this Wednesday, I believe. Or Thursday. I can't remember which day. So. We can discuss it further, but. You know, that's. My ultimate thing that I'd like to see is I'd like to have one contiguous trail. From one end of the town to the other. I think that would be a really interesting feature for the city of Stevenson. You know, it would bring in dollars. Anyway.
There are people, when you go up to the dump. And as you're going, people during the summer, there's cars parked along the drive in front of the dump. There, there before. Chester, when you, when you come up from the dump into the stop sign and you're going into town to Chester. There's cars parked there all the time during the summer and they're going through the brambles to, I think, the falls. But I thought that was private property. And I don't understand why they're going there.
The property, the property has been condemned after the, the slide. I know there are people who go out of, of what's. Hot Springs, Alameda, is that the name of the road?
Springs goes up and then there's that road that goes to the dump.
Yeah. But I mean, you can take a shortcut and just jump across Chester or you can go. Where Piper Road is. Now, that's, that's an issue that we would have to take care of because Piper Road, that where it fell off, that's, that's a danger. We would have to address that somehow. Because that's just, that's asking for trouble. That's asking for a lawsuit, you know, if we don't address it. I mean, I know we have signs up there now that say, you know, keep out, which, you know, absolves us from any liability, but, you know. If we were going to, you know, pursue this. The Rock Creek. Trail any further, we would have to address that.
Well, I think it's really important just to know all the public access points and. Like, I, I believe all of this started because of the public access on Iman Cemetery. And I, I came to that public access in two thousand and seven when we had the rock slide. Because I wanted to go take pictures. Well, the homeowner was not happy, but the public access is right in front of his home. And it was there when he bought it. But he put a little bush there so you couldn't see it. So you would have to go through the cemetery to come to Rock Creek in order to take pictures of the slide. And, and, and the city did take care of it. They cut them bushes back. I totally understand the homeowner's point. I always felt like, why wasn't the public access closer to the cemetery fence? So it would be at the end of his property and not in the, on his front step. But the public access down by the. By Rock Hole Assisted Living is right on the side of the building. And that was one of the mandatory things included in the, when the county built that thing or had it, gave the permission to build it. That there would be public access right alongside the building. Going down to Rock Hole. Now, the sign has disappeared. Over time, but there are places like that where we do have public access, but they're no longer marked. So I think we need to know where all these places are and then figure out. Do they need to be moved?
Well, I, you know. I think, I think that makes one of the reasons for putting a trail on the east side of Rock Creek. Of, of, you know, a valid idea because. You get them out of Angel Heights, you know, I'm a cemetery that thing and. They can go see the falls and, you know, they bring money to the town. And it, it's a, it looks to me to be a pretty easy project until you get down to where the medical center is and then that becomes.
That's because of the dredging in two thousand and seven after the. The landslide.
Yeah. And too, you can look at Rock Creek and you can say, what is it you really want to try to achieve down there? Why do you want to have access? And we've set some priorities. Maybe it's not a, a four lane trail along Rock Creek to start with. The priority maybe is providing access to those falls area where you've got, you know, better point of view. I think the interesting thing that I really like about this whole effort. Is for years, we've, we've tried to develop the river access on the Columbia River Gorge. You've got the highways and you've got the railroad. It's just. Very limited. So you kind of wonder whether or not we're even living on a river. Are we living on water? We have access to water. And, and that's, that's why I think that this process we're going through is, is so unique because I think Stevenson. Has a real opportunity that perhaps more so than many of the other. You know, communities to have great. Water access. But I think, Mary, as you know, yeah. Waters of the state. Below mean high watermark, you're, you're, you're fine. It's, it's getting to that point. So in other words, when we're talking about water access. We're not really talking about. Access to what is publicly owned. Because that's, you know. I think as Alex is, that works pretty well when the water is low, not so well when the water is high. Because you don't have any dry ground to walk up. So you're going to have to look for those opportunities. When we did that, that development review. The development hasn't gone, gone ahead down there. We had a long conversation about. Public access there. So a lot of these things, you, you could have a grand design, but. I think we need to think very practically about how you go about it because it may be incremental in terms of how you pick this stuff up. Particularly if you're dealing with some of the larger private property development.
You know, many years ago, and Charlie, this is for you. Many years ago, we had the comprehensive plan. Forget which year, and the whole community was involved and it was a lot of people were involved. There was some bloodletting. But we all agreed on, on things at the end, and that's why the plan was adopted. But we all, we all agreed on the rural character part of the com- plan. We didn't define it, but we knew it when we saw it. And just to, you know, talk. It, it's like profanity and other things that you know it when you see it or hear it. And so people have an idea of ru- rural character means. And I think it behooves us to have that conversation with the community. And, um, I think it behooves us to have that conversation with the community. Because maybe the community is changing, but if you talk to the people who are longtime residents of this community, they know what rural character is. And it is not Chinatown and is not Angel Heights. Uh, so, um, you know, uh, again, maybe we need to have this conversation again. But, and, and and do, and to figure out what we want to be when we grow up. We certainly do not want to be Portland or Hood, Reno.
I agree. We should have that, we should have that debate or that discussion. I agree.
And I, and I think as you look at the city too, there's a variety of environments that you're gonna find. You have a developed waterfront. That is, I don't know, would you call that rural? I'm not sure I'd call that rural, but we have some really fairly natural, uh, you know, habitat areas and, and elements on Rock Creek Cove. Those are, those are different, you know, and I clearly wouldn't want to lose those habitat values in Rock Creek Cove where there's natural values there. As part of an access program. But you're not going to have that same level of experience if you're walking along the, uh, the portin waterfront. It's gonna be different. So it's, it's how do you, how do you look at what you have as an asset and make the most out of, uh, uh, out of that environment?
Well, your downtown association's, uh, new mantra is to do stuff for the community, not for tourists. Uh, which I kind of agree with. Uh, because, uh, we live all here all year round. They come and go. And, and that, it's nice that they spend money, but, um, you know, maybe if you look at it from, how will this benefit the community? How will the community enjoy it? Maybe that will give you some input into what you're gonna build.
Well, I think it, you know, trails. Yeah, it's not just for people from out of town. Absolutely.
Yeah, I know a lot of kids that like to go down to Rock Creek to the falls. But, I mean, the local kids.
I'm not sure you want to, you know, the amount of time the sheriff says spends at Dubed Falls. You might not want them to be spending that much time at our fall.
I was gonna say.
Well, yeah, hopefully we won't be doing.
Maybe we don't know who want to know what's going on down there.
What are the thoughts we want to share?
Good work.
Yes. Thank you, Alex, and, uh, we look forward to your April nineteenth Charette and, and hopefully, uh, seeing what kind of response we get as some of these concepts become more focused. So appreciate your time with us tonight. Is there anything else, any other specific place you'd like us to be thinking about?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess the intent here is to come, come back what May eighth, that's the next planning commission meeting and have, have something to report. So it's a, it's a short amount of time, um, so we'll do, do our best.
Forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thanks.
Should we go back to the short plats, Ben?
I am ready to. I'll introduce them both, uh, generally at the same time. So, uh, whenever somebody requests, uh, to divide land into four fewer lots, uh, the regulations say that the notices need to go out to all the adjacent property owners, to various, uh, public officials and to the planning commission, uh, to see if you have any comments to incorporate in your proposal. We do have two, uh, two large short plats that are, um, being requested in town. One is off of Chester uh, streets, uh, on the east side of the road. One is on the east side of Connect Creek Road. Both are two large short plats. In both cases, um, staff is seeing them as relatively straightforward. And when they are relatively straightforward, we recommend that you entrust the decisions to staff. I I'll note on the one on Connect Creek Road, that is, um, currently developed and served by Septic. Well, you had a conversation the other time, uh, proposal came through that was on Septic, uh, which led to a condition that they connect to sewer when sewer becomes available. In this case, the Public Works Department is already recommending that condition. And so I'm not seeing a, a large need for you to discuss that or to request that staff include any condition related to that for this proposal.
Okay. Thoughts? Is that the, uh, one that's for sale, uh?
Close to the creek?
Yeah, I don't know how you feel.
This is just for, for comments from us, right? We don't, we don't have any, um, jurisdiction over this.
You can make suggestions to staff, uh, to incorporate into the decision. I'll evaluate those and do my best to, uh, make sure that any condition that might result is, uh, defensible and related to the scope of the project.
Yeah, I think the nature of our conversation is what role do we want to play in this? Do we want to, is this straightforward enough that, you know, Ben can handle it in his administrative capacity? Uh, or do we want to become more deeply engaged in this? But Ben, I think what caught my eye on the one in Connect Creek is the, is the sewer aspects. If that is going to be a condition, um, of this short flat that they connect in sewers area. I think that was, that was my concern. With that particular, yeah, the short flat.
In this case, the recommended condition is to connect when it's available, but also to participate in its extension. Um, so.
But it's consistent that, that we're even. What are thoughts on these? Uh, you want to offer some comments for Ben to consider or simply, uh, want to defer to Ben, uh?
Say, let's just pass it on.
Pass it on.
I would say the same, reading through them, they're very cut and dry and easy.
Pretty straightforward.
I agree.
You need a motion to that, Ben?
Don't need a motion not to comment.
A second.
Say nothing.
All right. Let's go back and you got the, uh, I lost on.
Uh, page thirty-three. It's just a general question for you on public comment expectations, uh, section of the agenda.
Now, how did this come up?
Yeah, I wondered about that too.
Well, the Board of Adjustment is a board that meets infrequently, um, and only when there's an appeal or a request for variance. And so we had a variance request. Uh, they came in recently and as I was updating their agendas to more closely match yours, which I hadn't had the need to do. Um, this came up and pulled, uh, concepts from other agendas and public comment expectations, uh, that are out there. So uh, if you are going to, um, try a reunion meeting that gets out of control, Mr. Chair, it's very helpful to point to the, the ground rules or, um, expectations that have been established ahead of time. I included the red text, um, for, uh, the Board of Adjustment on my own. I wanted to see if you thought there would be a benefit to that, uh, for you before just including it in New York Public Comment Expectations. Uh, that red text for everyone's benefits is, uh, where your current expectations right now and with individual comments may be cut off after three minutes. Uh, what was included for the Board of Adjustment was that disruptive individuals may be required to leave the meeting and persistent disruptions may result in meeting being recessed and continued at a later date.
Thoughts? Reasonable to include.
How do you encourage someone to leave the meeting?
You don't encourage them. Ask them and if they don't, then you.
It says required to leave, not encouraged to leave.
So we can't, we can't just beat somebody up and just throw them out the door, right?
No, no, no. If they don't move, then you recess and schedule that reassess. So, um,
The Board of Adjustment has never had to use that clause. Let me, let me clarify.
Yeah, well, I would hope that they would never have to use that, that clause.
But it's nice to have in.
I don't, I've, I've been in meetings with.
Yeah.
Charlie, any thoughts?
No, I mean, it's, um, it's like, it's one of those things you hope you don't have to use, but might as well be explicit about what the ground rule is.
Yeah, I agree. So essentially, if you run into that situation, you stop the meeting and say, beat it. And if they don't beat it, the meeting doesn't continue?
The hammer is actually for, it's for beating them.
So your folks generally support this provision?
Yeah.
That's my sense. Uh, do you need a motion on this without this?
If you feel the need to, to formalize that by a motion, you can. Um, I feel like I have the, the direction to include that.
I'll motion to add the language recommended by them, which is disruptive individuals may be required to leave the meeting. Persistent disruptions may result in meeting being recessed.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Folks in favor, say aye.
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 Folks opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Who's at the staff on staff?
Hey, hey, hey.
All right. Now there's subcommittee reports like this.
Well, when it comes to annexation, um, I, I am way behind the curve, uh, and I hope that, uh, when I am finally back in Stevenson, I think next month, after all this both work and pleasure travel, uh, I will catch up to what I volunteered to take some leadership on. So I appreciate the maps being assembled, Ben. Um, and there's now we've got some good information to work with, but, um, Jeff, I want to dig back into this with you, um, you know, over the course of the summer.
Yeah. And I'm anxious to do that. I'm anxious to see these maps because I think they'll give us a good visual picture of, of what's out there. So we can, we can have that conversation hopefully uh, with the county. The county staff is up and, and ready to engage on.
Yes.
Well.
No parking next?
Let's, yeah, let's do parking.
Parking. Well, before I went out of town, um, Ben and I met quickly and kind of, um, agreed on it. Um, a little bit of a game, a plan. And now that I'm back in town as of this evening, hopefully we're gonna meet this week. I was gonna touch base with you tomorrow and go forward. We definitely, I think you were the one who brought up that the um, parking plan was done in September and we, we definitely, we need to do a summer one. Um, as well, and maybe even updated other date one going forward. But that's where we are. So we'll know more at the next meeting because we will have that.
We'll be busy.
We will be busy at the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Staff wise, I've been able to devote a lot more time to the parking aspect of it. So we, we do have a base of data, uh, from the September, uh, uh, gathering that we did oh, twenty twenty-one, September of twenty twenty-one, um, to show where there were parking problems. To show how people were parked on a Thursday and on a Saturday in September. Obviously, those are just two data points that we've clearly identified the need to gather more and with July as a target. So that's um, the next focus that I hope, uh, to, to work with on Anne and get the volunteers up to go out and, and count cars again. Uh, you know, which spaces are filled. Uh, on the staff side, I am, uh, drafting the program document for a potential fee in lieu. Um, this would be the zoning code requirements are still there, uh, for, uh, providing or increasing the overall parking authority downtown. The onsite requirements would go away if somebody were to pay, uh, the city a fee in lieu of this voluntary fee in lieu. They could be used to add to the, uh, on streets for our public parking supply that's around town. And so this is where the other focus of Anne's work, um, will come into play is we'll identify several potential parking improvements that are through the downtown area and assemble, um, additional people for the subcommittee to recommend which of those are the priorities that we should start budgeting for, start setting aside, um, money for. Uh, setting aside that money partially, uh, from that fee in lieu of parking. And so we would establish the fee based on our estimates to provide that addition. Uh, so program document is coming together for that. The zoning code, municipal code amendments are, uh, coming together for that as well.
And I'm just really curious as to how a fee in lieu, how much that would really generate in terms of revenue. And not quite sure how you make that estimate, but if we're looking now at what goes on in terms of development. How much you have. There's not many, there's not much fee in lieu that you would generate.
Or there's not a lot of lieu to acquire.
The one part of the dynamic that we're looking at is that the, the physical limitations of downtown properties, uh, and the onsite parking is what is a big player in the, the slow development game.
Right.
And so removing that as that barrier changes the dynamic for how we would estimate how much it would generate over time. But it, your point is not missed.
Yeah. Well, then you have that lifetime from collective fee that would actually benefit itself something round. In terms of identified property and development property.
And there are just on streets parking improvements that can be made also versus, uh, an off-street lot or something. So uh, the example that I throw out there often is here's a fire hydrant whose location is such that it's, um, preventing two spaces that could be there if it was shifted over closer to the driveway, which also has a no parking area. And so what is currently a forty-five foot clear space could be reduced and two parking spaces. So that might be your near term priority or that sort of.
He was a term we used here in Atlanta already.
And it is, um, it's shaping up to be more of a parking master plan. So every on-street block frontage will have that improvement identified or identified that there's no room for that parking improvement and just move on. And then you're prioritizing in time and location, which of the master plan projects get done in one time.
Thoughts? Thanks, Anthony. Take him this one.
I'm excited.
Parking queen.
No, 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 no.
I think.
Little motorbikes.
Yeah, I think it's, I think the title is Zarina, isn't it?
Ben, you want to go then, uh, your, your staff reports here?
I'll go right into that. So broadband is something that would, that we've worked on at the plan commissioner and at the city level, uh, in the past that stalled out as we waited for um, the county or a, a bigger jurisdiction to really take the leadership and so on. Um, we weren't just waiting for that because boy, it'd be great if somebody else did that. We were waiting because the maps at the time showed that our coverage was such that we weren't going to qualify as an under or unserved area. And so there would be no point in truly forwarding a broadband project, knowing that it's not gonna, um, uh, benefit from the outside funds. That world has changed a little bit and there's a lot of outside funds coming from the state and federal, um, level into the broadband game. And so, uh, we are partnering with, uh, the county, under the county's leadership, uh, the new commissioner, Lucky, is, um, highly involved in everything there on two di- different complementary broadband projects. Uh, and McKed, Mid-Columbia Economic Development District is instrumental in helping us with those. The first project is called a rapid design study. This is something that's technical assistance provided by the Washington State Broadband Office. The first project is called a rapid design study. This is something that's technical assistance provided by the Washington State Broadband Office. And that assistance comes in the form of a outside consulting firm that's. identifies project areas and how to serve that area with broadband level speeds or. And that's definition that changes so frequently that I never committed to memory, but. Broadband level, broadband means faster and the actual speed is what changes. So the. Rapid design study will give three options for providing broadband level speeds within several areas of town. Those three options would be all fiber network and then. Some. The other two are unclear to me. One definitely has some over the air network component of it, whether that's via satellite or via towers. I don't know. But they will put dollars to those that would. The dollars and the network. Area again will qualify us for future grants or future partnerships with broadband providers that we then go to the granting agencies to. To bring money to. So it's going to cost us X million dollars to provide a complete fiber network to Stevenson or this neighborhood or. Some other geography. Are you ready to partner with us, internet service provider, if we can get a certain amount of that? Yes, you are. And and then we'll make some agreements in that partnership about the level of service and actual speed. And how our our residents residents are going to connect. So. Identification of that network and is also something we ran into as a barrier before and knowing. What the technology need is, what a project looks like was a big definite barrier. And this is. Overcoming both of those. And so that's a big benefit. That's project. Deliverables for that should be sometime in May or June. This year, yeah, really quick turnaround. For for those, there's a lot of federal money that's coming through with bipartisan infrastructure law for broadband. And step one of that is for states to assess the broadband needs. Within the state so that a funding plan can be developed based on those needs. Washington's assessment of those needs includes an effort from the Washington State University Extension Service to. Engage communities like ours that may be overlooked. And so the identification needs for our area. Is. Being shepherded by Mcked with Washington State Extension Service funding and technical assistance. They've organized a broadband action team to start identifying goals. So that one is also a very quick turnaround. The report to. The state level is due in the middle of June, so they can be included in those assessments of need that are. Subject to some federal timeline for the next distribution of funds. So that is definitely. An iron that was hot and we're trying to strike that now and fit it into all the other priorities, but it's going forward and happy to have the assistance from the county and. You all pulled up into City Hall a different direction today. There's a waterline project that's going on out there. Over time, we've been working on the water system on this side of town. So. Twenty thirteen or so, there was a project to bring a waterline, upgrade the waterline down Connect Creek Road. Loop road going up to Frank Johns, loop road going up past Frank Johns within that time. And then this is the next component of that is replacement of old brittle waterline in this area. And a lot of the valves that our crew wasn't able to do the last time around. So contractors began their work today and they're. Making progress. They want to be done with this project and on to the next. So.
Is there a timeframe?
I, there is, and I just have not clued into it. That's. Infrastructure under the streets is being done in advance of the. Pavement restoration that I reported on last time. So trying to do it right, get the order right.
Are you putting in broadband?
I believe that that's not. Wastewater Treatment Plant Construction is active and will has been for a while and will be for a while still. The overall timeline was pushed out much longer than anyone wanted based on the availability of some electrical component that's necessary to. Actually turn the switch at the end of the the project. So that. Is unfortunate. As we've been making that progress, Carolyn Sor have alluded to it, that that administrative order that had been placed on us has been lifted because of the progress that we've been making. Treatment of waste as it goes through the plants as it is. With the lifting of the administrative order and the delay in the plant progress. The mayor is and city council have been. Looking for ways to reconsider the current moratorium. Right now we have a moratorium on any connection that's would be greater than residential strength. And so you could build a restaurant, you'd need to do pre-treatment to a level that's going to bring it down to the same thing that the rest of the residents would would put out. They're wanting to modify that to tie it to real industrial use. So we would no longer have a moratorium on just commercial level leaks. And so I believe that that's on the agenda for next week. So a change to that, a removal of another potential. Factor in what's slowing down development. So.
Yeah, it's good.
End of reports.
You're better than Mark.
Two links rural urbanism as a concept to to try to wrestle with. This goes back to precedent from Europe, which had the the urban center. And then have a pastoral setting around it. And they take a data approach to to that analysis. So it's a good one to check out. And then the parking reform network, specifically the the parking map that they are having is showing. How much of our urban land is devoted to parking currently? Reform Network largely. Advocates for the removal of any parking requirements for communities and it has resources beyond just the map demonstrating. How cities, how much parking cities provide, but. Links for you to access as you will.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's been, Ben, a link and I also sent it to the sheriff about the meaning of that. It was how to plan your city for safety and security. And there's a a name for that planning. And I I did send it to Ben. It it's a planning. Name.
Design or something.
Yes, and it actually is really a good read. I I hope he, I would hope he would send it to you. Summer came back and said she read it and sounded good. It it's hard to plan your areas so that. You have security for the people using them, but also planning to how your, your police are going to. Use that area too to react to situations. It was a really interesting read. I want to invite you all to the plant and seed swap, April twenty second. The Grange is doing it. It's our annual seed swap. And oh, sorry, sorry. Here you go. The plant and seed swap. It's our annual event. So we have free plants and seeds and people can bring their offering. No money changes hands, but this is just to. To kind of spread our local. Stuff, the things that work in our community, so you can grow them and that. It's at the library gathering from ten to two on April twenty second.
And I'm just one observation I've been within, may have caught it in the regional media, is the city of Roslyn, Washington? Where northern exposure was.
Yeah, it was filmed, yeah.
Yeah, with Helly, there's quite a divide in that community in terms of. A much more prosperous, new wave of people coming in and building homes. And the long term residential population, not being too happy about it.
Well, I thought they all lived in Cleo. Isn't that the neighboring town?
Yeah, Cleo is not too far away from Roslyn. I thought it was, it was pretty interesting. Kind of goes back, I guess, Mary, to some of your comments on the character of the community. Whatever that character may be.
Did we have a character? It was a great TV show. On a personal note, I was doing a a wheel for my, you know, my kids, my grandkids and stuff and. The the topic came up about, you know, how to. What to do after a pass and I am going to be recycled. So that is legal here in Washington. You can turn yourself into dirt and have a tree planted on top of you instead of gravestones. So. You know, from a planning viewpoint, that that's how to deal with, you know, cemeteries from now on. I mean, there's seven. What, seven billion people on this planet? Can't put them all on the ground.
And they say it's much more carbon efficient.
What's the cost of that versus like?
It's like a thousand bucks or something like that. Yeah, it's not really that expensive at all. You just, they put you in a bag with some stuff and turn it.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of places in Washington that are doing.
Yeah.
Like one just up outside of. Woodland.
Yeah, Seattle. It's recomposed, I think, isn't it?
Well, we all hope that contingency plan isn't isn't realized anytime soon, Davey.
No, 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 nothing like that. I just, you know.
Long time from now.
Yeah. Oh, I'm I'm planning to stick around and give you guys hell for the rest of my life.
All right, that's a good goal.
Okay, any other comments? Go to the order. How about a motion with you?
You're welcome. It's where I transferred from.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you all much. We're going to have a busy meeting. Next meeting will be busy. Rest up. What the, what dates do I need to be?
Circle up on that. I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Well, I know about the charrette, but I I think there was something about a.
What time do you say? I could hear him on the phone. Okay, thank you.
Look forward to being back in person, if not next meeting, meeting after. So good meeting tonight, though.
And you'll still be tan, right?
I hope so. I've been in the sun, so it seems to, seems to have that effect. Yeah, take care, you guys.
Yeah, enjoy it for all of us.
I will. Thank you. Bye bye.
Yeah, our connection was late.